Housing Committee, we have called this meeting today, November 23rd at 1:00 PM. And it is a meeting that, due to COVID-19, it's going to be conducted telephonically. We will begin with a public comment. Because it's a special meeting, there will be no general public comment. However, the public may comment on individual items. I'm going to open up the meeting to public comment on all items. Madam Clerk, do you want to do a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Sadio?
Present.
Councilmember Crucaria?
Here.
Councilmember Harris Dawson?
Here.
Three members present, you have a call, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Before we go to the agenda, which I see a slew of consent items, let's go to public comment. And again, I think we need instructions on public comment, or we're good to go?
I can read them for you, Mr. Chair. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1608711866 and then press the number sign. Press the number sign again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak.
Can we hear public comment now?
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, we're going to start with public comment.
Thank you.
Caller with the last four digits of your number at 5846, could you please press *6 and state your name and mention which items you want to speak on?
Hi, my name is TJ Sparre, and I am calling to speak on behalf of item number eight, and that's the anti-harassment ordinance. I'm calling because-
You have one minute, you have one minute.
Thank you. I'm calling because I've experienced an issue with my landlord. I was unable to pay rent in April, and I have legally one year to repay this. However, I was forced to to pay early, otherwise she was threatening us to evict. And I just think that because we don't see an end in sight of COVID-19, people struggling to make ends meet, we really need something in place that's going to end this harassment. People are worn down. They have our energy focused on, you know, keeping ourselves just in good spirits. And one of the primary motivations is harassment. And, you know, if they can get their vacancy to control, then they can raise the rent for my unit. And we just need to disincentivize these actions. We need penalties for landlords to continue these practices. And I hope you all consider this anti-harassment ordinance very-
Thank you, caller, your time is up. Caller with the last four digits at 5846, could you please state your name, press *6 and state your name and items you want to speak on?
That was just-
Hello, caller with the last four numbers, four digits, 1403, could you please state your name and the items you want to speak on? Please press *6.
You did.
Good afternoon, niggas! And we are looking to see all items, please!
You have, you have two minutes.
What about my general? He'll always be my general.
No, no general comment, this is a special meeting.
Yeah, okay. I'll have to tone it down then. Anyway, let's talk about the tenant harassment. I've had to get more aggressive in my landlord activities lately. I have my tenant, the scruffy-looking, white, long-haired little asshole, lives in my fucking apartment upstairs, and he won't pay his goddamn rent! I've been sending out notices, and the sheriff keeps returning, saying they can't unlock the decider proceeding. Even now, this son of a bitch, this really white beggar with long hair, you might have seen him? Name's Ray from Encino. So, I would ask in this ordinance that you make certain exigencies accepted. And for example, when your landlord is acting no good, and when your tenant is engaging in political activities against Joseph Biden Jr., the honorable Vice President Kamala Harris, or our future Treasury Secretary, you know, Sadio, that you immediately terminate your tenancy. You must immediately evict. Now, we get to the CD1 affordable housing project. Please limit those applicants. Only niggas from CD1 and CD-
Your time is up. Caller with the last four digits at 0914, please press *6 and state the items you want to speak on. Caller with the last four digits, 0914, could you please press *6? State your name and state the items you want to speak on. Caller with the last four digits, 0240, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
My name's John Parks, and I'd like to speak on item number eight.
You have one minute, sir.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. John Parks with the Coalition for Economic Survival. CES fully supports this anti-tenant harassment ordinance. Harassment has always been one of the greatest issues facing tenants, but the pandemic has only made that worse. Tenants have received faulty three-day notices, uncalled entries of workers who do not abide by health orders, along with having their peace and enjoyment of their homes taken away. We thank councilmembers for their attention to this, but it must be a first step to a fully funded and fully-staffed anti-tenant harassment ordinance. Resources must be made available to investigate and penalize landlords who use harassment as a tool of displacement. And private attorneys are far too expensive for the most tenants, already overburdened with decimated employment and accumulating rent. We strongly urge adoption and implementation of this anti-tenant harassment ordinance. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Caller with the last four digits, 3645, could you please press *6, state your name and the item you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 3645, could you please press *6? State your name and the items you want to speak on?
Good afternoon, my name is Joe Donlin with Strategic Actions for a Just Economy, and I'd like to speak in support of item number eight.
You have one minute, sir.
Every single day in L.A., thousands of tenants experience harassment by some landlords, management companies, and other agents such as relocation companies. For this reason, we ask the Housing Committee to pass this ordinance and call on the full city council to pass it before the end of the year. We hear the traumatic stories at our tenant clinics and in our regular outreach with tenants. Before eviction often comes harassment. Almost everyone who has been evicted or illegally displaced has first been harassed. Harassment is the practice of wearing down the human spirit that drives families with no other place to live out of their homes, despite the often inevitable consequence of homelessness. This year, our colleagues at the Eviction Defense Network have seen harassment cases increase 352% over 2019 numbers. This ordinance will be an important step and should be made permanent through its codification into law, but will likely need to do more in the future because of the city's hiring freeze during the pandemic, only limited enforcement resource-
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Caller with the last four digits, 3829, could you please press *6? State your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 3829, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Hi, this is Danielle Agner-Craggs with AGLA, and I'd like to speak on Agenda Item Eight.
Yes, you have one minute, ma'am.
Thank you. The Association does not condone or tolerate any form of under harassment by our members under any circumstances. As the committee considers the advancement of this program, we urge the committee to recognize that the issue of harassment is not isolated to renters, as housing providers also experience harassment. In drafting the proposed ordinance, it's critical that the definition of harassment be specific so that the stated prohibitions are known and to minimize any ambiguity related to the type of conduct that may be deemed as harassment. Moreover, the related signs are excessive in comparison to other jurisdictions and should be subjected further assessment. An equitable-
Thank you, your time is up. Caller with the last four digits of your number at 2752, could you please press *6? And state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four numbers, 2752, could you please press *6?
Okay, cool. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Curtis Skinner, I'm calling on item eight, so-
You have one minute.
Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Curtis Skinner. I'm a community economic development fellow with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. Wanted to call to voice our strong support of item number eight. This ordinance grew out of years of harassment's efforts through the daily harassment that many tenants experience across the city of Los Angeles. More recently, unscrutinous landlords are taking advantage of the confusion and fear around COVID-19 to become even more aggressive and intimidating tenants. This is an emergency and it's time to provide tenants with this important tool. However, we are concerned about the removal of staff positions at the City Attorney's Office and ACD, which was included in an earlier draft of the policy. ACD may report that if the adoption of this ordinance will be ineffective with adequately enforcement. Therefore, we urge the city to pass an ordinance that includes city staffing. First, the city attorney to represent tenants would be tenants who need to find the money or resources to hire a lawyer. And second, it's unclear exactly how the city's budget will be impacted because ACD's proposal funded the position entirely through a per-unit fee. So, the ordinance will be budget neutral regardless of staff, yet would be much stronger with a city attorney supporting tenants.
Thank you. Caller with the last four digits, 5436, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four numbers, 5436, could you please press *6? State your name and the items you want to speak on?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Zach, and I'd like to comment on all items.
You have two minutes.
Okay. First of all, I would like you to please support this anti-harassment motion. A previous caller said some nonsense about landlords being housing providers. They're not housing providers. They are housing parasites who remove housing units from available supply and prey on their tenants. Landlords often have access to resources to fight tenants who do not have those same resources in court, disregarding existing rules, using disinformation, and plowing ahead with illegal evictions, and then relying on this disparity and inequity to exhaust and frustrate tenants into submission. We are facing skyrocketing unemployment and a wave of evictions on top of Los Angeles' already unprecedented homeless crisis. With L.A. County going back into lockdown protocols, we need to do everything in our power to protect tenants, and this anti-harassment ordinance will be an important tool in combating unsavory landlords using the pandemic to ramp up aggressive and illegal evictions. Please, please support this motion. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you, Speaker. With a person with the last four digits of your phone number at 0206, please press *6? State your name and the items you want to speak on?
Yes, Susan Hunter with Los Angeles Tenant Union Hollywood Local and Housing Human Rights. Just briefly, I just want to say that I would ask the city to not take a completely hands-off approach on this. We definitely need the ability of the Housing Department to be able to document and cite when we have offenses for harassment. As we all know, harassment typically isn't a one-off. It's usually a pattern of abuse, and we need to be able to demonstrate that pattern of abuse in order to have better legal standing in court. So, at the very minimum, we do need an agency that can at least cite and recognize when violations of harassment have occurred and be able to keep that in our profile with that housing unit. So, in that way, we have a stronger case in court. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Caller with the last four numbers, 7231, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Hi, my name is Kenneth Mejia from the L.A. Tenant Union vibe and also the Greens. Item one and item eight, please.
Yes, you have two minutes.
Yeah, so on item one, it's good to see that you guys or the city council is actually going to get some of these occupied residents that have been foreclosed and turn them into affordable housing, right? And the fact that you guys are also adding a rule that if developers do build on these city-owned residents, that they must make sure it doesn't displace or disrupt the current tenants there. So, that's great. I guess my question is, or my comment is, you know, this has been authorized since 2016, so I'm guessing has this vacant land of these six properties that the city owns, you know, has there been no progress yet? We're about to hit 2021, so I think you guys should be doing this more, right? Finding more cities or more areas that where, you know, the developer or the real estate company that were making payments to foreclose on it, you guys should grab it and turn it into more quality public housing, right? And so, that's my issue is, number one, the timing on why it's taking so long. And number two, I think you guys should do this more often in getting these properties away from people. And on item number eight, on the anti-harassment eviction ordinance, I think, you know, as many people said on here, there are a lot of people who are going through evictions right now, even before the pandemic. I'm going to go visit a potential lockout later today in Los Angeles, and many people are scared. They are getting harassed by their landlords because they are trying to make payments the best way they can.
Thank you, caller. Caller with the last four digits, 1404, please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Fred Sutton with the California Apartment Association. All items and number eight, please.
You have two minutes.
Hello, honorable committee members. Fred Sutton calling on behalf of the California Apartment Association. We strive to uphold highest standards in the rental housing industry. We do not tolerate any forms of harassment, and California state law provides extensive anti-harassment measures. We ask the committee to review the language of the ordinance once it is drafted by the city attorney. We must ensure language is not ambiguous, nor could be used to conduct frivolous lawsuits or penalize honest miscommunication. An equitable ordinance will ensure all parties are protected. With the removal of the mediation board, we ask the committee to further review the related fines as we believe they are excessive. Lastly, in defining harassment, key language is missing, which is from the Code of Civil Procedure. This was directed by the committee to be included in 2019, but is still missing. That should be updated in the future draft. Thank you, and we look forward to working further on this item and important ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last four digits, 9193, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Um, hi, my name is Abby Keens. I am calling to speak on item number eight.
You have one minute, ma'am.
Okay. So, I'm calling to support this ordinance as a member of the L.A. Tenant Union, as other callers have also mentioned. And just recently, in every single one of our meetings, we've had tenants come to us with reports of varying degrees of harassment as a result of non-payment of rent because of COVID-19, which is obviously legal until the end of January. And this harassment is often severe and ongoing. And we need legislation, whether local or state, that prohibits this type of harassment because it's completely unethical. And the last caller from the California Apartments Association was really doing lies about frivolous lawsuits because many of these tenants have been through hell and back with their landlords. And so, we need to support an ordinance that prohibits this type of behavior from people who own property. These are people in power, the power dynamic is innately unequal, so it's not-
Thank you, caller. Caller with the last four digits, 9423, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 9423, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Yes, my name's Sylvia Marroquina. I'm just making sure that you hear the things that are happening out there in South L.A., but many other places in Los Angeles. I think we need the anti-harassment ordinance to happen. There's, I mentioned, an eight-month-old who was attacked viciously with chili powder just so to make sure that the parents know that they're no longer welcome in their apartment. And this is outrageous. This type of behavior should not be happening at all, especially right now with COVID-19. With COVID-19, well, putting at risk so many lives. People don't have any place to go. They need this-
Caller with the last four digits, 0914, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Hi, yes, my name is Caleb, and I'd like to speak on item number eight.
Okay, you have one minute.
Great, thank you, yeah. I'm calling on behalf of, I'm the field organizer with the Everyone in Campaign with Ground Game Ale, Service Not Sweep, some Los Angeles Tenant Union. I'm calling to support this motion. It is not some phenomenon that homelessness is happening in the city. It is caused by things like tenant harassment, illegal evictions, that happen all the time. As the last caller was mentioning, they're often very violent. And because of that, we should definitely have some sort of mechanism or law in place to ensure that people who are suffering at the hands of these types of evictions have some sort of recourse, and people should be held accountable. This should be a first step towards something much more broad, much more systemic. So, yes, pass this, but also let's have much stronger protections in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller with the last four digits, 4328, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 4328, could you please press *6? State your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 8393, could you please press *6? State your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 8393, could you please press *6, state your, go ahead.
Hi, this is Enrique Velazquez. I am with the L.A. Tenant Union with the Northeast Local, and I am calling in support of Agenda Item Number Eight. Let me tell you two quick stories here, why this is necessary. In Glazelle Park, we have a member that was beat up by the owner. He brought a couple of gang members to beat up not just this woman, but also a neighbor, members of ours, also, and her son. The police wasn't able to do anything because there is no enforcement. There is nothing in place that prohibits harassment. The only reason why the landlord is doing this is because there is no protections, and there is nothing, nothing, that will prevent this from landlords doing this stuff. In El Sereno, this other landlord, you know, threw a gate on top of one of our members and walked on the gate, and nothing has happened to this person because there is no enforcement. We need no more delay for protections against harassment. You know, enforcement is very essential, it is necessary. Please do not pass or approve something that will have no teeth. We, this is, has been way-
Thank you, caller. Caller with the last four digits, 8437, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 8437, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, 4990, could you please press *6, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Hello, am I being heard?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Harvey Eder. I'm speaking for myself and for the public, for the Power Coalition, and for our homeless equity project.
You have one minute, sir.
Okay, we're on number eight, about violence to these tenants and it should extend beyond the end of the year and protect against anything like this, the violence that probably just talked about. What's happening about homeownership taxes? It's been such an eight to 20 years. We had the cash 12 years ago, stuff is 10, 20, 30, 40 dollars. There's been no homelessness program. If we use that here, and there are no income requirements under federal regulations for senior and disabled, most of the homeless patients would fall off after this right now. Okay, this is not being done in Judge Charles Court. We say there's a restraining order, so until that's done, delinquent properties, bond sales, everything that's in the state banks just is thrown in. We were moving with 13, we were told nothing about homeownership, nothing about this, we were trying to get this information, we're being punished from the process. And this is happening at the city and county authority, it's happening with the meetings, and it's happening at the council, at this committee.
Thank you, caller. Caller with the last four numbers, 2577, could you please state your name and the items you want to speak on? Press *6. State your name and items you want to speak on.
Hello.
Yes.
Hello, this is Elif Kinyajolo, calling on behalf of Park La Brea. I'd like to discuss all items and item number eight.
You have two minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to start out by echoing the comments that we do not support nor practice harassment in any way. And we frankly take issues with statements painting as a broad brush that all landlords do so. That practice is abhorrent. There are many laws making sure that it's illegal to do so. And, you know, we also echo the comments that we'd like to work to ensure that the language of such an ordinance is narrowly tailored to really protect tenants against really problematic issues and not be used as a blunt instrument. That's simply punitive in nature. So, we would request that the ordinance be sent back to the Housing Committee before it's presented to the full council so that we could discuss certain amendments, like, for example, excluding criminal liability, providing a cure period before being able to file a lawsuit, and ensuring that the definition of harassment, again, is tailored to conduct that's not already made illegal by other statutes and is also consistent with California Civil Code Section 527.6b3, which is the model that it's being based on per the ACD report. We think these amendments are necessary in order to, again, effectuate the desired protections, but without deploying a very broad instrument, or blunt instrument, I should say. And, you know, one final point I will make is that, you know, there is going to be- to be varying practices between smaller landlords, um, or, and abilities, and larger landlords, and the small landlords may not have the resources, um, to implement a precise compliance regime. So, mis, mistakes that may be made by those people will, you know, will, um, be punished potentially even by criminal liability. So, um, you know, we would urge the, uh, the committee to, uh, take note of these, uh, requested amendments, and again, have the ordinance sent back to this committee before it is presented to the full council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caller with the last four numbers, eight, four, three, seven. Could you please press star six, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four numbers, eight, four, three, seven. Could you please press star six, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four numbers, two, seven, five, two. Could you please press star six and state your name and items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four numbers, two, seven, five, two. Could you please press star six, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four numbers, five, four, three, six. Could you please press star six, state your name and the items you want to speak on? Caller with the last four numbers, five, four, three, six. Go ahead.
Hello. Hi, uh, yeah, I'd like to speak on, um, agenda item eight.
You have one minute, sir.
Yeah, um, I just want to say I strongly support this ordinance. Um, tenant protections are nowhere near what they need to be in Los Angeles, and it's really revolting to hear these landlords calling in and asking for, um, you know, protections against criminal proceedings when their behavior is violent towards tenants. Um, if, if, if these landlords didn't practice these horrific harassing methods, some of which have been detailed and are disgusting and violent, uh, these things wouldn't have to happen. These kinds of ordinance wouldn't have, have to happen, but they do, because landlords do practice those. So while they can call up and say in flowery tones how they, they strongly are against harassment, that's total bullshit, and everybody knows it. So please, please support this and make it strong, and don't listen to their pleas to water it down so they can continue-
Thank you caller. Caller with the last four numbers, seven, nine, seven, zero. Could you please press star six, state your name and the items you want to speak on?
Um, hi, yeah, my name is Clara. I want to speak on item eight, uh, if I'm good to go.
Go ahead.
Um, cool, yeah, I want to speak on my personal experience of being harassed by a former landlord. It was before the pandemic, so like, it was a little different, but me and my roommate, they basically received physical threats from our landlord, as well as a refusal to repair anything in the house, including, including a broken front door. Um, I just want to say that in this position, you probably don't have the money to hire a lawyer and find out what specific tenant protections there are, and it's incredibly difficult to try to look it up, and something like this would have actually helped me and my roommate. We didn't end up getting evicted, but we were very scared and tried to take legal action and weren't able to, and also, um, lost our entire security deposit, unsurprisingly. Uh, I thought this was like an individual experience that we had, but while talking to people, I realized this is an incredibly common experience to be harassed by your landlord, and it actually economically benefits landlords to have their tenants be too scared to ask for protections and too scared to, uh, like, you know, use their actual-
Thank you caller. Mr. Chair, that's all the callers we have. Mr. Chair, that's the end of all our callers.
That concludes public comment. We're ready to move forward with the agenda. I thank you, and I thank all who have called in. Madam Clerk, I see that we have items one through seven, they qualify as consent items. I'm prepared to move that motion. So without objection, I would entertain a motion to adopt, as I put forth, uh, and a second, uh, by Mr. Krikorian to adopt items one through seven. That includes adopting the CIO recommendations, except for item six, which is an adoption of the H-SIT recommendation, just so that the record is exact.
Mr. Chair, for item number five, we need the CIO to read their report into the record, but all the other items can be taken on consent.
Let's, uh, let's move those items sans item five without objection, and then we'll come back to item, uh, five.
Calling the roll to take items one through four, six, and seven on consent, Council Member Sedia.
Sedia, aye.
Krikorian.
Aye.
Harris Dawson. Three votes, the recommendations are approved.
We have item five before us with a report from the, uh, CEO that needs to be read into the record.
Good afternoon, Emily Cervantes from the Office of the City Municipal Officer. Our recommendations are that the council, subject to the approval of the mayor, one, amend recommendation A, two, and three of the related Housing and Community Investment Department transmittal dated October eighth, 2020, relative to the request for authority to accept the 2020 Community Services Block Grant, CSBG award, to ultimately be subject to the review and approval of the city attorney as to form and legality, and adopt recommendation A as amended. Two, adopt recommendations B and D of the related court. Three, authorize the controller to, A, record in the Community Services Block Grant Fund Number 428, a receivable from the California Department of Community Services and Development in the amount of six million, eight hundred, eleven thousand, two hundred, seventy-three dollars, and establish new accounts and appropriate funds as follows. Account Number 43T582, account name, Family Source Centers Nonprofit, in the amount of four million, six hundred, fifty-four thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Account 43T694, Family Source Discretionary, thirty-two thousand dollars. Account 43T143, Housing and Community Investment Department, five hundred, forty-three thousand, seven hundred, twenty-one dollars. And account 43T299, reimbursement of general fund costs, two hundred, forty-seven thousand dollars, six, two hundred, forty-seven, six hundred, twenty-three thousand dollars, um, for a total amount of five million, four hundred, seventy-seven, and, four hundred, seventy-seven thousand, six hundred, forty-six dollars. And B, increase or decrease appropriations within the Housing and Community Investment Department Fund Number 143 as follows. Account 001010, salaries general, in the amount of four hundred, twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred, twenty-nine dollars. Account 002130, travel, uh, decreased by a hundred and fifty-two dollars. Account 003040, contractual services, um, increased by fifty thousand, three hundred, sixty-seven dollars. Uh, count 006010, office and administrative, increased seventeen thousand, seven hundred, sixty-six dollars. And account 006030, leasing, increased forty-six thousand, eight hundred, eleven dollars, for a total of five hundred, forty-three thousand, seven hundred, twenty-one dollars. And those are, uh, that completes our recommendation for today.
So move. I thank you. So move. Second by the chair, you want to read the roll?
Calling the roll for item number fo, five, Council Member Sedia.
Sedia, aye.
Council Member Krikorian.
Aye.
And Council Member Harris Dawson.
Yes.
Three ayes, the recommendations in the CIO report are approved.
That takes us to item number eight, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item number eight is a CIO and Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department reports relative to costs and funding associated with implementation of a citywide tenant anti-harassment program. This item is also referred to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, comments from the, uh, committee? Mr. Harris Dawson?
No comments at this time, Mr. Chair.
Um, let me state for the record that, uh, we've had robust public comment. Uh, there is, uh, concerns raised by tenants and community. Uh, it's never the intent of this committee to be broad-brushed. We recognize as we move forward that in many instances, we are dealing with outliers, whether it's landlords or other parties in the city. We're not talking about a community in general, but talking more specific about, um, outliers in the landlord community. Nonetheless, uh, we must write legislation that addresses those concerns, and this is our first effort. We would prefer to have a more robust proposal that had staffing, outreach, training, um, mediators, administrative law judges, uh, so that these matters could be addressed promptly and quickly, so that neither the tenant or the landlord would be in distress any longer than necessary. Unfortunately, that is not the case, so we will proceed with the first step, which is asking the city attorney, uh, to create the ordinance. Uh, I have heard the concerns of the, um, uh, community of landlords and have listened to them, and my response is, as I said, we, this is written for outliers, for people who, uh, are abusive and who break the law, and for which we must have laws as a remedy for the tenant community, and so we are moving forward as written, but I have asked the C, I will ask the C to pay attention to their concerns about an overreach. Uh, I recognize the growth and increase in the fines, and as you look at that, uh, always, 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 we want specificity. And so, uh, there are matters of law that are matters of law for the county, for the state, for federal, and they should be, uh, clear in the proposed legislation, and also be specific to the extent that they can be. Uh, and I would note that there's always room for, uh, including, but not limited to, and so that there's specificity, but also flexibility, so that when other people are nefarious in their efforts to breach the agreements between landlord and tenants and harass the rights of tenants, that, uh, that we can address those concerns through this tenant harassment, uh, legislation. Uh, I think that has addressed, uh, concerns both of the tenant community and of the landlord community, and so I'm prepared. Mr. Harris Dawson, move forward, should you have any other comment?
Uh, thank you for your comments, uh, Mr. Chair. I think you summed up the main issues at hand, and, uh, the, including identifying the problem we're trying to solve, uh, and, uh, and how, uh, what's before us, uh, moves us in that direction, so I, I am in concurrence in support of the chair.
You want to do a roll, Madam, um, Clerk?
Uh, I just want to confirm that Council Member Krikorian was not present for the vote of this item?
Yes, he has been recruited from this item.
Thank you. And calling the roll for item number eight, would that be to approve the recommendations in the CIO report?
Yes, with our comments, uh, incorporated, yes.
Were there, sorry, Mr. Chair, for clarification, any additional action items in addition to the recommendations in the CIO report?
Uh, we were asking for, in the areas where there could be more specificity, we want the specificity. Uh, we were noting that, uh, we acknowledge that there is a big increase on the fines, and we want to make sure that it's, uh, we review that, um, to make sure that it's appropriate. Uh, I think those were the first, those were the, uh, kind of suggestions that we sent to the city attorney for their drafting.
Okay, so-
Finally, let me add, let me add this, uh, there was a concern about, um, uh, the criminalization, these are misdemeanors, and, and so one of the things would be perhaps if the CA could write something that's referred to as a wobbler, that may be helpful, so that we're, again, only dealing with the outliers. Uh, we have a range and a room to address gross and criminal conduct. We've heard examples of it cited today. Uh, but again, this is an effort to deal with outliers, and so let's see if the city attorney could craft something that addresses that with respect to the concerns around criminality. And then finally, uh, as always, uh, if there's room for opportunity to cure, although I don't think it needs to be stated, there should always be an opportunity to cure. People, uh, who are engaged in bad practices should simply stop, uh, that's the first step, but, uh, let's provide an opportunity for people to cure their behavior. I don't know if it's five days, it's more than enough to address those concerns. Bring notice to the tenant.
Okay, so for item number eight, calling the roll to approve the CIO report as amended by the chair with additional recommendations. Council Member Sedia.
Sedia, aye.
Council Member Krikorian is not present for this vote. Council Member Harris Dawson?
Yes.
Two yeses, this item is approved as recommended by the chair.
Thank you. Does this, uh, clear our docket?
We have no further items in the queue, Mr. Chair.
Let's see. Record reflects one fifty-three for our commitments. Uh, I want to thank all who called in, who participated. Uh, we listened to each and every caller and took to heart, uh, their concerns. I want to thank my committee, uh, for their, um, attention and commitment to helping us adre, address these problems during this era of COVID, uh, and note that, um, we will have an opportunity to relook and look back again on this legislation as we move forward in the post-COVID period, so that we have the resources for it. I think today's a very important day for all Angelinos, who've done the work of the people. For that, uh, Mr. Harris Dawson, I would, uh, move to adjourn the meeting. Move to adjourn?
I moved, I, uh, seconded your motion to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.